Council meeting, it is Tuesday, July 15th, 3:00 PM. We'll have our invocation by Councilmember Deborah Ross and our pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Joel Gerard. Please stand.
Hey, let us pray. Oh, Father in heaven, we thank you for this opportunity, Lord. Father, we pray that you give us wisdom and knowledge to do the best things for the citizens of Bossier City, Louisiana, Lord. Father, we thank you for giving us this opportunity. Father, we pray that you bless each family that's here, Father, and we pray that you bless all of the city employees, the police department, the fire departments. Father, just bless us all, if you would, Father, and give us the right mindset to do the things that's pleasing to you and to the citizens of Bossier, Lord. Oh, Father, we thank you for our families giving us the opportunity to work for the citizens of Bossier, Lord. We're just so grateful and just thank you, Lord. Father, we just pray that you bless us all, in Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
If you'll repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Smith. Mr. Chris Smith.
Here.
Mr. Cochran.
Here.
Mr. Hammond's out today. Ms. Ross, here. Mr. Cliff Smith.
Present.
Mr. Gerard.
Here.
Mr. Maggio.
Here.
We have a quorum. In accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings Laws and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the City Council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda items may approach and state their names and address for the record, and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. All other audience members are asked to observe the meeting quietly. Yes, I know I sound like a frog.
All right, so ceremonial matters, recognition of guests. We have Mr. Ronnie Colvin with Comcast. Come on up, sir.
Yeah, Ronnie Colvin, Senior Director of External Affairs for Comcast, and Mike McCartel, our Senior Vice President, was supposed to be here today. He spent six hours in the Atlanta Airport yesterday, and his flight, the last, after 6:00 PM, it was canceled, so he's probably live streaming and watching it live stream. So, you know, thank you first. Let me say thank you to each of you and Mayor Chandler, thank you for allowing me to come before you today. Comcast has been working in Bossier City now for a couple of years, and what I wanted to do today is give you an update on our progress of our expansion here in Bossier City. We've invested, project to date, about nineteen, little over nineteen million dollars in Bossier City. What we're building is a very fiber-rich network that, when we're about halfway through right now, and when complete, we'll have a, you know, we're going to build out the majority of Bossier City. There may be some small pockets that we can't get in for maybe, you know, for easement purposes or something like that, but the plan is by the end of 2026 for us to have our network completely built out, and I will say we're about halfway through now. We'll finish another quarter of that this year and then the remaining in 2026. So it is a, you know, again, a fiber-rich network. We'll be able to launch and have multi-gig speeds, you know, up to two gig for residents right now. We're going to have a new service that's launching this year that's going to be available for businesses for up to 100 gigabits per second, and that is going to be available, you know, very soon, you know, by the end of, by the end of Q4 of this year. So we're going to have something for, you know, for every business and also, of course, for the residential side. Pricing is, we really have a price point for everyone. I mean, we've got an entry level for price income constrained individuals, so we've got an entry level of $14.95, and then we've got, again, packages all the way up to, you know, to over two gig. And one of the things the company just rolled out to try to simplify the pricing is we've got a five-year price lock guarantee. So if you take our service, it's guaranteed at the price that you signed up for for five years. So that is, that's something we've rolled out. We think it's, again, it's simplified, we've got just, you know, kind of a stair-step speed structure, and again, for someone who needs ultra-high speed, you know, that, that'll be available. We also offer traditional cellphone service. We have home security service. We certainly have a video, all kind of video packages, you know, delivered the traditional way, and of course, we've got a streaming service through Peacock. So, you know, all of those will be available to, you know, to every resident and business that we pass. You know, there's, you know, when we build the network, all the services are available. Essentially, we'll be offering, you know, comparable services to what we're offering today in Shreveport. We've been in this area for about 15 years. We, this was a, we took over this system from Time Warner, and we've been operating it under the Comcast Xfinity brand since then, and, you know, we're doing a lot of expansion, really all over. You know, there's a lot of rural broadband projects that are going on in the state of Louisiana through the Gumbo office, so we've, we've built out some rural broadband in Caddo, so I'm in Bossier Parish as well, and so we've been, you know, we've been doing a lot of construction, a lot of expansion in the area. One of the things that we like to do when we come in is getting grained in the community. So we've got, you know, we're sponsoring this weekend the Red River Balloon Rally. We've got, we've got a sponsorship set up for the Highland Jazz and Blues Festival coming up in September. We've got a lot of, we've already sponsored a lot of sports, kids' sports programs for the remainder of the year. We just, we did a veterans event, and Louis was there, and we did a haircut event for veterans, and well-attended. Mayor, thank you for coming out, appreciate seeing you. So, you know, we've, we've got a couple of ways that we've been able to, you know, notify our customers and future customers, let's call it, so when we go into a neighborhood, you know, we put out, you know, door hangers, yard signs, and we've got a couple of websites that we built where people can, can let us know if there's issues or, you know, find out when the service is going to be available. We got a My Town site that we, you know, it's a microsite that we created, so you can, it's xfinity.com/MyTown, so you can go there and see when the, you know, whether the service is available, when it's going to be available. And we're, one thing that I wanted to kind of close with is that we do, all of the whole United States, what we have, we found a need for Wi-Fi in community centers and other, you know, anchor-type institutions, and we've identified a couple of community centers, so we're going to put a lift zone, and what that does, it gives you free access to Wi-Fi for students, for families that don't have Internet, just computer, you know, you have, actually have a computer lab or a computer center where you have access to computers. We've identified a couple of locations, we've already got a couple in Shreveport, just about every market, we try to go in and put a lift zone or multiple lift zones, and it's usually with some, you know, either partnering with the city or partnering with the Boys and Girls Club or some kind of, you know, nonprofit to be able to offer Wi-Fi on a large scale. So, so you've got multi-users. But that is, just to kind of summarize, again, we about halfway through with the project, vested 19.3 million, project to date, and we're going to finish the remaining half by 2026, the end of 2026. So I'm happy to answer any questions or, or, you know, just if it's something I missed, I'm happy to, to go into that for you.
Counsel, does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I've got one.
Yes, sir.
The big thing I hear or see people talk about is, is whenever contractors or whoever's coming, they're trying to access their backyard, they're not identifying themselves, they're not, they've got a yellow vest that I can go to any hardware store and buy. Are your guys in uniform, do they have IDs? That, I think that would bring a lot of peace to people if they knew they were dealing with.
Yeah, that's a fair comment. We, all of their vehicles should be marked as, you know, as a business partner for Comcast, and, you know, they, they should have, like, if we're working at a particular area, they should have a permit that's approved, you know, on their dash, you know, to show that they're, they're actually authorized to do this work. And, and again, having the door tags before we start was an integral part. That's something that we worked with Rodney on, Rodney Taylor, early on, and learned a lot from, quite frankly, from just some of our mistakes. We, you know, but that was certainly a valid concern, because not every easement is a rear easement. You know, a lot of times we're working on a front easement, those are easy accessible, but when you've got, you know, people that rightfully have their gates locked and things like that, it took a lot of coordination and, and, you know, certainly the door tags helped, and, and then again, having a mailbox on the back end if something happens to where we can, you know, where we can be alerted about it.
Counsel, any other questions?
Again, thank you for partnering with us, and we certainly, we've been welcomed into the Bossier City area, and I personally appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. I do have one thing for you.
Sure.
If a customer has an issue with any of the contractors, what's the best way for them to reach out?
I would say, let's, let's do the, send us an email, and I did have my card, and you should have that, it's got my cell number on it. I'm happy if you've got a, an individual constituent that says, hey, look, I've got a problem, please reach out to me directly, because that is, sometimes it's, you know, it rises to that level of importance, and I'm here, and again, I've been coming here 15 years, so I'm not going to go anywhere. I'm here, if there's something I can untangle, you know, I'm happy to do that.
Ms. McGraw, would you be sure to put his contact information in the minutes so anyone can look it up?
Yes.
Easily. Thank you.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Ronnie.
Thank you all very much.
Take care. Real quick, before we move to approve the agenda, I'm going to put someone on the spot. Ms. Hemingway with the Bossier Chamber is here. I'd like to invite her up, and she has some students with her that she is going to introduce and give the new council members a understanding of why they're here.
Thank you, President Smith. So, the Bossier Youth Leadership Program is out of the Bossier Chamber of Commerce. It's a program we've run for 30-plus years, and we take juniors in high school in Bossier Parish schools, and we take them around the community throughout the school year. It's a select group that's chosen, there's 40-something chosen each year, and so they're taken out of class about once a month and shown different things in the community, social services, quality of life, economic development. They go to the Capitol at the end, have a graduation. It's a great program that has been very successful, but part of their adherence to being in the program is they have to attend public meetings. So they're asked to go to their town council if they're in Benton Plain Dealing or to Bossier City Council, also the school board meeting, and they also go to teen court. But we have students from each and every high school across Bossier Parish, so that, you know, we truly can say it is a parish program, and we have some who didn't know they were going to be put on the spot but are here today. We have a large contingent, they must have just gotten their sheets. And so if y'all stand, I think the council wants to welcome you and the audience. Thank y'all for coming today. So, we hope that they'll learn, obviously, see government in action by attending these meetings and not just hearing about it in school, and so this is just an extra part of that, and then y'all can all see Ms. Phyllis after the meeting, and she'll sign off that you were really here. So, thank you for letting us tell you a little bit about the program and welcoming all of our students today.
Thank you. All right, Counsel, I need a motion to approve today's agenda. So moved. Second. All right, we got a motion by Mr. Gerard, a second by Councilwoman Ross. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? If there's none, counsel, please cast your vote. All right, Counsel, I need a motion to approve the minutes of July 1, 2025, regular council meeting, and dispense with the reading.
Motion.
Second. All right, got a motion by Councilman Cliff Smith, a second by Councilman Gerard. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? If there's none, counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right, public hearings and action on unfinished business.
Adopted ordinance authorizing the attached amendment with Waggoner Engineering, Inc. to modify engineering services for the city of Bossier City. Final reading.
So moved.
Action second.
All right, so motion by the chair, second by Councilman Cochran. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? If there's none, please cast your vote.
Adopted ordinance amending the 2025 Public Services and Sanitation Fund budget by $100,000, increasing expenditures for mowing services in the Street Sweeping and Grass Cutting Division. Final reading.
Motion. Second.
All right, got a motion by Councilman Cochran, a second by Councilman Maggio. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? If there's none, counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopted ordinance to establish a tax reduction audit of municipal finances to require an initial audit of the preceding 12 fiscal years to align with the city's three-year mandatory audit cycle, to establish a reoccurring 12-year audit cycle thereafter, and to provide for related matters. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Ross, a second by Councilman Cliff Smith. Is there any public comment? Any, Ms. Williamson?
Good afternoon, Counsel. If I may, I'd just like to state for the record that there's a financial statement and compliance audit performed annually for the city, so for those audits are not on a three-year cycle. Thank you.
All right, so any other comment from the public? Any other comment from the council? All right, if there's none, counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopted ordinance to declare certain movable equipment owned by the city of Bossier City as surplus to the city's needs and provide for disposal according to law. Final reading.
Motion. Second.
I got a motion by Councilman Cochran, a second by Councilman Maggio. I guess without Councilman Hammond's here, everybody's a little gun-shod today.
I was about to say, it's very quiet.
Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? If there's none, counsel, please cast your vote.
A public hearing for amendment to the fiscal year 2020, 2021, 2022, 2023, 2024, action plans for community development block grant funds, and the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, the CARES Act.
It's a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing. Mr. Brown?
Counsel, it's just concerns of community development block grant. We had, through the last few years, we've had several small outfits that got funding that didn't spend every bit of it, in order for us to reprogram it to somewhere, you know, where we can use it, which we're proposing to put it into housing type uses, and critical repair and ramps, and critical repair is the exact thing we planned on putting it into, and we have to go through this process to move the money. We're not taking any money from anybody, it was just money that just wasn't spent, and it has to be spent within a year, because HUD has a rule, it's a statute really, that requires that we can only spend 15% of our grant on public services in any one fiscal year, and so if we move it forward and spend it, then we'll go over that 15% limit, they'll be wanting the money paid back to them, so.
It's a public hearing, so if there's any public comment on this, no, is there any comment from the council?
Just, Mr. President, just to make sure, so use it or lose it, correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
Pardon?
We have to use it or we lose it? Is that what I'm hearing?
We won't lose it, but, you know, it needs to be used. They want us to use the money, and it can't be used by those sub-receipients that had it originally, so, and we have to keep the, you know, 15%, no matter where the money, what year it comes from, we got to keep it down to 15% per year, and that's what's causing the problem.
Okay. Is there any other public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
All right, we'll close the public hearing. New business.
Adopt a resolution of the Bossier City Council requesting a comprehensive plan from the administration for enhancements to Interstate 20 exit and on-ramps within city limits upon the completion of the state of Louisiana's rehabilitation project. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Ross, a second by Councilman Cliff Smith. Is there any public comment? Any comments from the council? If there's none, then counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution endorsing and encouraging the administration to initiate the request for proposal process to engage a professional marketing firm for city branding purposes. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion by Councilwoman Ross, a second by Councilman Gerard. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? If there's none, then counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution for Parks and Recreation to fill a maintenance worker one position in the Parks and Recreation Division and backfill any vacant position this creates. First and final reading.
Motion. Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Cliff Smith, a second by Councilman Cochran. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? If there's none, then counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution adopting an amendment to the fiscal year 2020, 2021, 2022, 2023, 2024, action plans for community development block grant funds, and the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, the CARES Act. First and final reading.
Motion. Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Cliff Smith, a second by Councilwoman Ross. Is there any- Is there any public comment? Any comments from the council? All right, counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance repealing Resolution 97 of 2024 and creating one unclassified full-time office manager slash administrative assistant position in the city clerk and city council office to support secession planning and to confirm that said addition is net neutral to the 2025 city council budget. First reading.
Motion. Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Cliff Smith, a second by Councilman Gerard. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? If there's none, counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to amend ordinance two of 2025, which amended Section 94-76 of the Code of Ordinances of Bossier City, Louisiana, to adjust sanitation rates. First reading.
Motion.
Got a motion by Councilman Cochrane, a second by Councilman Cliff Smith. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? If there's none, counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Maggio abstains. Motion carries. Introducing ordinance appropriating $280,000 from the Equipment Replacement Fund to the Streets and Drainage Fund to purchase an EW170 wheeled excavator for use in streets and drainage for street and ditch maintenance. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Ross, a second by Councilman Maggio. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council?
Yes, I have, of course.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Ross.
With this equipment costing $280,000, do we know if we have any attachments to it? Is there any warranty on this equipment? There's not very much information given about this equipment. Can someone elaborate on it?
Mr. Rich?
How's it going, counsel? Mayor Chandler? Yes, it's a brand-new machine. It carries full manufacturer warranty. I can't state exactly what it is, three years, four years, but it is a brand-new machine.
Are you buying any attachments to go with it?
It, yeah, it will have a, a 360-degree nuckle to attach, that attaches the bucket to the stick. The stick, you have the boom, the stick on an excavator, and then the bucket attaches to the stick. That way it will rotate 160 degrees, has a grapple on the back, and that will make that bucket more adaptable for ditch cleaning, loading trees in the case of a storm. We, we got rid of our old Greedalls in the last sale we had. One was a '98 model and the other was a 2006 model. So we don't have anything with this weight capacity to lift our skid steers down into our flung ditches so we can pump and stuff out. So it takes something like this to do some heavy lifting. And also, it's a wheeled machine, so we're not, we don't have to buy a $275,000 truck and lowboy to haul a machine this size around that's on tracks. You can drive it to the area that you're going to work.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Wade.
All right.
Is there any other?
Any other questions?
You ready to use it?
Yeah.
Is there any other questions from the council? All right, if there's none, counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing an ordinance authorizing the mayor in responsible charge to execute the attached agreements between the city of Bossier City and the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development related to state project H016204. First reading.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right, got a motion by Councilman Cliff Smith, a second by Councilman Maggio. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? If there's none, counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right, is there any reports?
I don't have anything. I don't know if the mayor has anything.
Mayor Chandler, do you have anything?
Yes, sir, I do. And I want to tell the new councilmen how I enjoy working with y'all and how y'all fighting over to motion and second, that's, that's really going to do it, I think. It's hard to catch all the voices going at one time, isn't it? Now, I want to thank y'all for, and it seems like we're going to do a real good job working together. This weekend, the Red River Balloon Rally, Delta Utilities is a sponsor out at Louisiana Downs. It's going to be this Friday and Saturday. There'll be a lot of balloons out there. It's going to be food, entertainment, music, and it's going to be a real good time out there. Me and Louis just came back from out there and they're all fixing it all up to get it for balloons and stuff. Also, this morning, which I've missed, Farm Pro Feeding Supply had a ribbon cutting in South Bossier on Barkstill and I want to appreciate them for having a business in Bossier. Other than that, thank you, guys.
Councilman, is there anybody? Mr. Smith?
Mr. Mayor, we decided that you're going to be the one to go up in the balloon.
The sacrificial lamb.
And it's not going to be tethered down, so.
Or polluted.
Hey, Mr. President, just real quick, I just wanted to thank the young students here for being here. It matters what you do every day and you're the future leaders of the city, so kind of, it's awesome to see each and every one of you out here today. So I thank you for being here.
Mr. Cliff?
I have one announcement. For those, if you live in Shady Grove, this Thursday night, the Red River Road Runners will be doing their two-and-a-half-mile run, fun run. It's going to start in Mike Wood Park, come down Dennis, all the way to Ray, to Wayne, and then down Success Street and then reverse and go back. So if, if you live on any of those streets, expect a little congestion. They say that they're going to have between 200 and 250 people who run, bless their heart. So if you like to watch people in pain, come out and witness it, cheer them on, offer them a bottle of water, but again, that's going to be Thursday night. They're starting at 6:45 from Mike Wood Park. And then Mr. Cochrane has got a thing on Thursday nights that has never been publicized a lot. You want to talk about Bike Night real quick?
Bike Night.
No, not really. We put you on the spot, man.
So on Thursday night, we do a community bicycle ride. We do leave the East Bank District right behind the El Patio Restaurant. We leave at 7:15. Anybody and everybody's welcome. Kids are welcome. We do ride in the streets of Bossier City sometimes, so if you have a kid, bring him, but they're your kid, not mine, so. Everyone's welcome. Thank you.
So there are things to do in Bossier.
Absolutely.
And are you going to be running in the fun run?
Let me think about that. No.
All right, if there's nothing else, then meeting is adjourned. Thank you.